Okay, we're live now. I'm calling to order this meeting of the City of Honeyburg Council. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's great. Father God, thank you for those that are here today with their concerns for the improvement of our city. Thank you for the elected officials be with them today as they make their decisions that impact us all. We ask your guidance and that the decisions may be favorable for all the citizens of Honeyburg. For these things, we ask your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
So do we have a motion to accept the minutes from the 128, 2025?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have the Board of Finance minutes, which were also provided by Tom, that were met on the January 28th also. Do we hear a motion to accept those? Is there any questions?
Make a motion to approve the Board of Finance minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We need a motion to, for approval of claims. If we've got a chance, I know they're sitting down, but I get.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I'll second it.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the introduction, the hoarding ordinance, I think probably a little explanation. Really the easiest, the definitions of hoarding are listed in here. Unless anything, that's a fire hazard, obstruction of access for fire, emergency, or medical response personnel, harbage of insects, rodents, or other vermin, unsanitary conditions, condensions which are offensive to the senses, which interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property by others, a violation of property maintenance codes, a hazard to public health, a dwelling or premise unfit for human habitation, or excessive clutter in spaces precluding the activities for which the space was designed. And that could be a porch that you can't have access to, as an example, or other areas of the property that are limited access based upon those, whatever the activities are designed for the area. The other definitions are there. I think they're pretty well, I don't know, pretty well understood there, what we're talking about. So I don't know if anybody has any suggestions for changes, or if you had a chance to really make suggestions, now would be the time.
Again, the intention of the ordinance is to address public health, safety, and welfare that the excess accumulation of tangible personal property may cause. So this ordinance would prohibit excessive accumulation of tangible personal property that contributes to any of that was listed things that the mayor just read off. And that would include such accumulations on real estate, in or on dwellings, or motor Then the City of Honeyburg enforcement would be by the City Code Enforcement Department. The Code Enforcement Department would, if he suspects, would request a right of entry to make an inspection. If it's, the right is denied by either the occupant or the owner, then he would seek, upon probable cause, an inspection warrant from the Du Bois Circuit or Superior Court. Violations that are visible from either public property or a contiguous neighboring property where consent has been given to observe the violation would not require an inspection warrant or inspection other than observance, observation from the property. If it's determined that there is a violation, a notice is issued to abate the violation and 30 days are given. If there's a failure to abate it within 30 days, then it's subject to daily fines, the first day being $50, and then $100 for each day thereafter, up to a maximum of $7,500, together with the authority of the code enforcement officer to bring an action. Circuit or Superior Court to obtain injunctive relief, that is, a mandated order to abate against the property owner or offender, to abate the violation. There is a process for a right of appeal. Individuals who are cited with a notice of violation have 10 days from the issuance of that notice to request a review before the Board of Public Works and Safety. They can present evidence, the Code Enforcement Department as well, would present evidence. And then ultimately, the Board of Public Works would determine whether or not there's a violation based upon that, the hearing, the evidence at that hearing. And of course, there's always the right to appeal to the Circuit or Superior Court orders of municipal bodies. This would, excuse me, this would add Section 150.080 to our court ordinances.
So I have a couple of questions, maybe you could offer a little clarity. I noticed that it says in the area, Section E, Failure to Abate and Penalties, it says each day the violation continues to constitute a separate violation until such time as it is abated. Does that, do I interpret that as it's going to be 100 a day, once they get to the $100 level, it's $100 a day after that? Okay. And then.
For how many, for how many days?
Well, we're, by statute, we're not allowed to find a total of $7,500 for any single violation, for any, for any type of violation. So they could accumulate up to 75 days, I guess, or close to it. It's $100 a day for each day the violation continues. But there's a limit, a top limit. Before it gets to $7,500, I would assume the Code Enforcement Department would bring an action in court to get an injunctive relief, a court ordered to abate the violation.
Do you have, you're giving, I'm cutting you off, but you're giving 30 days from the date of notice for cleanup, or for remedy the situation?
That's correct. I mean, it just, we just chose a number of days, 30 days to remedy, once they're notified.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify that. After they've been notified, they have 10 days to appeal, and they have 30 days to
Correct.
Correct the problem.
Right.
The only other question I had on here is the first paragraph says dwelling. Does it only apply to dwellings?
No. It is, it applies to, it applies to any dwelling, premises, or vehicle within the City of Honeyburg.
Okay, I read that wrong. I got, I'm following it now.
And you have premises afterwards, which is.
Premises, ten, okay.
Personal and tract of real estate.
Now dwelling is considered any building or enclosure which is used or intended for living or sleeping by human occupants. A premises is any tract of real estate within the City of Honeyburg. Tangible personal property is any substance that's capable of being touched or perception by touch. And vehicle is any conveyance on wheels, rollers, or otherwise movable intended to transport persons or tangible personal property, whether it's motorized or not. For instance, if there's a trailer to.
Camper.
Camper or trailer that's just, has an excessive accumulation that's causing, that's contributing to one of these lists of hazards, that would be a violation.
So one of the sections here mentioned, if a neighbor were to give the city permission to enter their property, and from that property you can see the violation, that doesn't require an inspection, or an interior inspection. But could that, could an assumption be made that if it's like that on the outside of the house, that it's likely that way on the inside of the house, or there's a chance in that a code enforcement officer might, even though they don't have a complaint about what the interior looks like, could it, could it be, could that exterior visual lead to an interior inspection?
Yeah, I'm not certain it could, unless the property owner grants consent to investigate, to inspect the property. In order to get, in order to get an inspection warrant from the court, you have to prove to the judge that there's probable cause to believe that a violation is occurring. And a violation on the outside doesn't necessarily, in and of itself, lend probable cause that the violation is occurring on the inside, unless it's visible, unless through the windows it's visible that there's an excessive accumulation of clutter and debris and personal property that, again, contributes to one of these hazardous conditions.
Okay. And then have, has our Code Enforcement Department made any type of, or offer any kind of commentary or opinion about this particular ordinance, and how it maybe is going to be enforced, or?
Yeah, the commentary is that this really gives them more teeth, so to speak, or more power to be able to. And one of the things that, you know, we have to be very careful of, that it's in here, is being able to utilize the courts in such a manner to help us enforce it. Once they hit the maximum fine that's allowed by state statute that we can't go past, that there can be injunctions, it could be contempt, or whatever, you know, the judge decides if they're not following that ordinance. The other thing is it opens up another opportunity for us if we have enough evidence to show that it's on the inside, to be able to seek entry into the house. We've not had ability to entry, to enter the house in the past without the, now, now we have that ability to be able to do that. We've asked for Health Department and different people consent, because they do in certain cases, especially in mobile homes, they have that ability, just because of all, but they've not been real helpful, the Health Department in that respect. So now this allows us and gives us more authority to be able to do that.
Okay. I know most everybody here, I'm sure, has seen the show or the series on TV that addresses this. And I think I asked Phil this similar question once, and Indiana law is different than probably where that show's being filmed at. But there's a lot of cases in those shows where the Health Department or the Fire Department issues some kind of document that requires the home, or renders the home uninhabitable at a certain date, where the, where people are literally required to leave the premises because it's unsafe. And, I mean, those shows, of course, are extreme. But do, in Indiana, are there any, is there any avenue for the Fire Department, or a Safety Department, or the Health Department to be involved in requiring an interior inspection if they see something that's unsafe?
Well, yeah, again, unless they have the consent of the owner. Well, first of all, if they're there fighting a fire, if they're there for a legal purpose and they observe a violation, they can be a witness, and that'd be sufficient grounds for obtaining either inspection warrant or proceeding with a notice of a violation and a citation. Absent that, they have to have probable cause to obtain an inspection warrant to go into the property to inspect it. If, if the property is of such a nature that it is unsafe for human habitation, we do have an unsafe building ordinance that does permit the city to order demolition of the property, that it be demolished, or that it be vacated. But of course, it's all a matter of evidence, it's a matter of degree.
I do want to note now, the councilperson, Tim Ware, has joined the conversation because of.
Hey, Tim.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to add one suggestion, question, one thing, on the violation visible from neighboring property. If that permission's given from that landowner, would we just be best ordered to get a signature that they allow this data from their property, in case it gets sent to court?
Well, yeah, probably, I mean, it'd probably be a good practice to get something in writing that gives consent to enter on the property. That doesn't, I don't think that necessarily has to be in the ordinance, but that'd probably be a good practice.
Good working practice.
We have had a couple instances in the past few months where we've utilized that, and those property owners are adamant that if you're going to release our name, we're not going to let you own the property. So realize that they don't want to, they don't want to face their neighbor, so to speak. We've had a couple of those instances.
I guess my point is, if it gets down to court thing, that they can judge that, well, you didn't have permission on my property. So that's all that I'm saying.
I know.
Well, typically, it's those people that invite you onto the property and observe the violation, they want the ordinance enforced. They're, they're assisting you, and they'll be willing to be a witness when you, if you have to go to court to prosecute an injunctive order. So, yeah, but you're right, it's always a good idea to get written consent for the property owner to come onto the property.
I would like to think that the fact that there is an ordinance, and the details will be published for everybody to see, that there could, we would like to think that there's going to be some self, some self-enforcement, that people are going to say, all right, I think I'm in violation of this, and I need to start cleaning up before it becomes a problem. But I understand that it, most people that have that problem don't identify as having that problem to themselves. So it's probably going to take some enforcement action around the city to, for people to see that we're serious about it. And I think we should be serious about it or not even do it. We shouldn't even have the ordinance, we're not going to enforce it. So there, I think that it needs to be communicated by us to the public, and then clearly to the violators what, what is coming, and, and then we need to act on these circumstances.
I can tell you, code enforcement was very instrumental in pushing this through, and they wanted something that was clear, that allowed them to be able to, and some of these instances that are on here, in the past, they felt a little handcuffed by, you know, lack of being able to do a baseball game. So I think Phil did a great job of taking their concerns and, and to play with this ordinance. He pretty much did it on his own, really. I can, it included everything, I think, that we all wanted to be in there, and that's code enforcement as well as myself, when we had discussions of what situations that we have out there we have not been able to address legally, and put something together that gives us that authorization to be able to act.
And I think it's important, too, to note that as, I think, whenever we start talking about going into people's houses or things like that, people kind of freak out, but it's only because we do have firefighters, or, you know, there have been specific cases where the EMTs or the firefighters were unable to get in the house to help people. So I think this is just, this is an action to keep our neighbors happy, you know, to kind of work together as a city, but also to help those that hoarding is a sickness. And so I think that it's helping people that don't realize that they maybe need the help before it's too late, and we can't help them. So I think that's important to point out, too. We're not trying to bully people into, this isn't messy houses, this is a different situation. Hoarding is different than.
We've had situations where firefighters were put at risk.
Right, right.
They all, they had to stand back because they couldn't get into the structure.
That's correct.
We have a firefighter here that tested that, too.
And if you get, if you're called by the fire, called by 911 Fire, or police, or ambulance, that basically would be access to the property. So.
Is this, is this written broad enough for, that it applies to commercial and industrial also, or just for?
No, it's, it's broad enough, it would, it would apply to industrial, commercial, any premises, any premises, any dwelling.
Yeah, so if you had a business and you.
Or any, any premises.
That's what I mean, if you had a business and you just kept stacking stuff, you know.
And if it, as a result of that accumulation, it affected, contributed to any of these hazards that are listed, it would be, it would be a violation, enforceable against that property.
Yeah. You know, what do you, what do you think the best way is to communicate this? You know, not everybody reads the paper, I'm sorry, Matt, but not everybody reads that. Most people don't listen to our meetings live. How do we get this information out to people? Isn't there a way that maybe we could include something like this in the utility bills? I know that's a lot of work to stuff those envelopes, but how could we do that? To get the word to people that this is something that is new, and it's going to be enforced, and they need to comply, and I think it would also help with people calling our attention to problems in their own neighborhoods. But I guess, how do we let people know? Is there some way we could do that?
Well, I think you suggested the utility bill. I don't know of any other way, if people don't read the paper, or if we don't, if they don't, if we could publish it on social media, we post it on our website, but if people don't access those media, it's very, really difficult. And I'm not sure people even read the mail, you know, stuffers in the mail, in the utility bills.
I've never read one, I've lived there 36 years, so.
Gaysly, I will.
You don't read his gas reports.
But I think at least.
I didn't see it, you know, that's your problem.
I think at least if we provide that, then we're, people aren't blindsided, like that this is happening. So if, if you choose not to read it, that's, that's okay. But I think that at least we've provided it to them, and I think that's probably the best course of action, because I think sometimes.
I think media coverage is the most important. And despite, you know, our cynicism about people not reading newspapers anymore, they still do. And they still, they read online papers, and they read printed material, and they listen to radio coverage. So, yeah, and then we also need to post it on our website, and have it available at the front desk for people to look at. And before and after it's adopted, if you choose to adopt it.
I'm not the tech guy at the table, that's probably somebody else, but probably Steve. But these QR codes that take you straight to a website, or straight to a page on a website, maybe just printing a simple QR code, because it's simple to do, my daughter does it for us all the time at the office, where somebody just holds their camera in front of it and hits the button, and it takes them to that page, where could we, could we just add to the newsletter that a new ordinance governing the issue of hoarding is now in force? Scan this QR code. I bet we would even have a way of tracking how many people used it for future reference to see if that would be effective.
Yeah, we could, we could be as simple as, we send out, boom, I don't know how many media outlets, it's several that we send out, our press releases, too, and we could give a connection, a link to build within that. Our newspapers have been pretty good with its, a council meeting and an action such as this, about making that a headline, because there aren't any other headlines usually in that week or that day that are worth printing. You know, so it depends on whenever those newspapers are printed, and I know that really there's probably, from a media standpoint, there's probably four media outlets from the print or online that people look at, that I, we have, you know, between JTS and the Witz Group, they're, they're very good about reporting, and I also do monthly interviews with both of those, so we'll share that information wherever possible.
Okay.
And we'll do what we can from our standpoint, sending out, letting it be.
If we can get it up on the Honeyburg's social media page, all of us can start sharing it, too, and it'll, it'll travel around.
We have options here to present, have a reading, and have a second review, or we feel.
It's a typical ordinance adoption. You can introduce it tonight if you choose, introduce a number of this ordinance, and if you choose, hold it over for further consideration and adoption at a later meeting. Or you could suspend the rules and adopt it at the same evening it's introduced. I think, generally speaking, an ordinance of this importance, it's been the practice of past councils to hold it over for a second reading, let the public have some input if they want, get familiar with the terms of the ordinance, and maybe attend a meeting when it's considered for final adoption.
Well, I, I would like to move as quickly as possible, but I think introducing it and letting it be circulated is going to help with publicizing it. I know I'll have several people call me about it, and just, I know that they will, and I like the idea of, I like, personally, I like the idea of introducing it tonight, to give it to at least the next meeting, or maybe a month, for it to circulate, and see what kind of feedback we get from it, and then pass it to future meeting.
I do think there may be some situations maybe brought to light, or that we may have to amend or update or something. If we move too quickly, we could miss those opportunities.
Right.
You know, so I do, I do, I assume Tom has a number.
Could be 2025-06.
06. So we make an inclusive motion to introduce and also set a date for a second reading, or?
You, yeah, you could introduce it by motion.
Any discussion, Tim, or?
Oh, I'm all for what you guys were discussing. I know this is long overdue, and I'm excited to move along with it. I think they're all, like you said, I had a person, a couple of people call me and ask questions about could just be abused, and I think the mayor explained it to me, it's very clear that, you know, if somebody thinks they're being picked on or whatever, they're welcome to come to the council, talk to us, or however. If you'd like to elaborate on that, maybe a little bit more would be great, but I'm all for this, and I think it's, it's time to do it. And if we have to adjust it or amend it down the road, then we will, you know, so we're entertaining it, and take a look at it if we have to.
Yeah, within the right appeal, there's also a provision in there that they would present their appeal to the Honeyburg Board of Public Works and Safety, that oversees our code enforcement people that they report to. So that demand is written, making a written demand to the head of the, of the office of the Department of Treasury within 10 days of the issuance of the notice of violation. And that would then would be, the appealing party should be given a written notice of the time and place of the hearing of the appeal, at least five days advance there, too. So our meetings are, when they're on Thursday, mean that we would have to really let them know the week prior, because we're maybe going to let them know on a Saturday or a Sunday. So they'll have at least six, maybe seven days' notice prior to that hearing to be able to be there. And they can be there in person, or they can send a representative, present evidence and testimony, et cetera.
If no further discussion, I'm making, I make a motion to introduce 2026-06 in regards to hoarding.
2025-06.
I'm sorry, 2025-06. Too many numbers in there, Tom. 2025-06, moved to introduce.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's a final roll call since Tim is participating.
Oh, yeah.
Waiting on you, Tom.
McBarren?
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Volty?
Aye.
Balance?
Aye.
Kissler?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
We want to propose at this time a time for the second hearing?
So, yeah, typically, you'd consider it at your next meeting, and you don't necessarily have to do final adoption at your next meeting. If you consider it at your next meeting, and you decide to hold it over for another meeting, you could do that as well. But usually, you would consider it again at your next meeting.
I would say we just move to the next meeting.
That's the 25th. As you recall, that's also the night when you'll have your public hearing on the gas rates.
If we want to line up that meeting, we can move to the first meeting in March, then.
Well, you, no, you can, of course, you can, if you've got time, you can consider it that night, but if you want to push it off to the March meeting, you can hold it over another meeting if you want to.
I think we could push it off to the first meeting.
Yeah, I will not be there at the next meeting, so that might be an issue for that, but I.
The following meeting is March 11th?
Yeah.
Not March 11th, but, uh, let me see. Whatever, the next one.
March 11th.
March, March 11th should be good. I was thinking the 25th of February.
So now that, the motion, Phil, or just move it to the?
That's fine, that's, that's just an agenda item.
Okay.
The American to establish that by agenda, and if you're, if you're expressing your preference that it be March 11th, that's, I assume that's what he'll do.
We'll put it on the March 11th. And just because of the threat of maybe severe weather that could impact enforcement of this, that March 11th heading in spring may be a better time to, so there'll be no excuses. And at that time, okay, anything else? No? Have anything else from City Attorney Phil Schneider?
That's all I have.
We do have the utilities, bad debt write-offs. We do have the utilities, bad debt write-offs. Uh, I think you each have a copy of those. I think that's, you just understand even though the write-off, that doesn't mean, it doesn't release anybody from authority, uh, our ability to, to black on these.
Right. Uh, our, uh, the total write-offs, uh, for twenty-two four are fifteen thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars and five cents. Uh, less than one-tenth of one percent of our sales, so, I mean.
I would, I would move to make the observation, this is the lowest toll amount in nearly ten years. It's a dollar amount, isn't it?
Well, we had last year, we had ten thousand.
No, I mean, prior to that, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Prior to that. It's been all the way back to sixteen, wasn't it?
Twenty-two, it was seventy-eight hundred.
I'm reading the wrong, I don't know where I'm getting.
Yeah, you're, you're.
I'm skipping something here or something.
In the second page, fifteen-three.
I know.
So higher than last two years.
I'm looking at this number.
Yeah.
Total.
Those are revenues.
Oh, okay. I'm looking at the wrong number. Gotcha.
As, as you get a percent of sales.
Percentage. Gotcha.
They're generally less than.
I'm looking at the second number.
One percent.
So it is a, okay, but it's not as bad as twenty-two, twenty-one.
Let's see where some of the properties are deceased. I assume that property sold, can we?
No. So what happens there is if an estate is opened, uh, we can file a claim in the estate. But in many cases, there, there aren't sufficient assets to open an estate. Uh, and so the, the, there's no, no assets to go after.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, but we, we check those out. Any deceit, any, uh, account holder who's delinquent, who dies, we follow those and make sure that, uh, if there is an estate open, we file a claim.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion. We accept the write-off of fifteen thousand or ninety-three dollars and five cents.
I'll say to the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call again.
Yeah.
We need a roll call again.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Volty?
Aye.
Bounce?
Aye.
Kissler?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Okay.
Top question for you. Would it be hard to find out like how long these people lived in these facilities, these, most of these apartments? Would it be like, are these like all under two years? That's, that's what I was kind of curious. How difficult would it be to find out when they signed up for the utilities and when they ended it?
Uh, if you go into each one's history, I mean, it can be done.
And that, well, that's going to be the question. If majorities are under two years, I think I'll make a difference. But, because I've brought this up in the past, like if they're, they've been there for more than two years, we gave their deposit back to them more likely than they, than they leave, then they still got an outstanding bill. So that's where I'm wanting to, kind of curious of where the majorities are. I got a film probably under two years.
With both of them being renters and a lot of, being a lot of transient, there's a lot of movement in renters within the city.
Right.
I would imagine these are, it would just be my guess, but that would be, uh, less than two years.
The, that doesn't, this, if they had a deposit, you would have applied that already.
It would have been applied, before, before this was even done, the deposit would have been applied.
That doesn't, yeah, that doesn't predicate that there wasn't a deposit that you've already taken to apply. Right?
Right.
The data that I think would be interesting to know would be, like first, what percentage are renters versus homeowners? The second, second thing would be the length of time or maybe just they, it was charged off within the two years or it was charged off after the two years?
Only three were homeowners.
Yeah, I think all these.
I think it would be interesting to the addresses and if there was a connection between the same addresses or the same landlords and the same tenants. And then I think that would be something like a study that would be worthwhile.
I think once they write them off, they, they can't reapply for utilities unless they pay their debt.
They can't come back into the system without, without paying this.
Right.
Plus a deposit.
But doesn't mean that if you, if we write you off, Pam, your husband couldn't reapply for utilities.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Or your cousin or your.
Nephew.
Not Uncle Vanny.
Three owners. There's three owners and three were deceased.
What would be the issue with requesting a credit report, a credit check or credit score before someone is allowed to turn on utilities?
Only to make your deposit.
We, we do a credit, uh, creditworthiness check. Uh, basically it's, we get what we can from a prior, uh, utility and what they have is generally a year. Uh, I think our ordinance says two years, but we, no, nobody has that. Uh, so.
So that's history with a prior, with, within our own utilities?
No, with any of the others. If they have a good, if they have a good credit, uh, with a prior utility, then we let, don't let them, we don't make them make a deposit.
I see.
If they're not, if they don't prove, if they don't prove creditworthiness, then we do.
What is the policy when someone moves out? Do they provide a forwarding address? Because there are a lot of these, like, since the bills are sent a month.
They skip.
Right, they've just left.
Just leave.
Because they don't have a forwarding address.
Well, Indiana law requires that you provide in writing to your landlord, I think, a forwarding address, but I don't know that there's any follow-up on it.
It provides, Indiana law says that the, that if you provide a forwarding address to your landlord, then your landlord has to refund your deposit.
Something.
Or, or explain how your deposit was used. Uh, and if he doesn't do that, then you can recover it and attorney fees, recover your deposit plus attorney fees. Uh, but they, but, but they're not required otherwise to give the landlord a forwarding address. If they want their deposit back, they're required.
Well, it seems to me that that's probably the problem in most of these is that people are leaving, then the bill gets sent to the empty house or whatever, and the next person doesn't pay it. Because I mean.
The thirty-one skipped.
Thirty-one skips, is there a way, how can we get around that? Can we do?
I can tell you, my eleven years is, uh, doing utility assistance, most of these cases, they skipped on the landlord too.
Yeah.
So they skipped on both, yeah. And as being a landlord of two-hundred-and-sixty that most of the time that they left the utility hanging, they also left the landlord hanging. So.
It just seems like maybe if we could have a forwarding or where we could send the bill to a, you don't think that's, I mean, I recognize some of the names on here and it's like, I don't know. I mean, maybe.
Well, they don't register with the post office to forward their mail. They're not going to get it.
I guess that's true. You wouldn't register with them.
We, we look for these people.
Yeah.
You know?
We use that service.
We, we.
And in addition, we just remember, we're also registered with Trex, which is a, which, which captures any income tax, Indiana income tax refund they're entitled to. Uh, so we have, when they apply for, uh, for a utility service, we obtain a tax ID number and we're able to track that with Trex. And if there is any income tax refund that they're entitled to, we're able to capture. And we do.
Yeah.
And that's why a lot of our past years, uh, bad debts have been, have been less, uh, particularly when we were getting, when we had the Economic Recovery Act and everybody was getting huge refunds and, uh.
Yeah, that was a good year.
But I, the only thing I want to point out is, uh, we are not unusual in municipal utilities. Every municipal utilities has a great deal of, of, uh.
It's probably bad debt really.
I mean, one, this is less than one-tenth of one percent of your revenue. Uh, the other thing is, we, we have four utilities. A lot of, a lot of cities and towns only have two, maybe water and wastewater, uh, or maybe electric and water. Uh, but we have four utilities and that's why perhaps our, our, uh, write-off looks huge, but, uh.
Not really.
But again, it's, it's less than one-tenth of one percent.
I think it looks good. I just think if there's something else we could do to help it, but it seems like we're, the Trex seems like that's a good avenue to, to take.
Considering like number thirty-five on this, how, how does one, like that's the largest individual one, but how, how does that happen?
That's a pizza place that was bought, was sold on contract and he skipped.
Okay, so they would have a much larger monthly bill than, than an average residential property. Yeah, I got it. Okay.
Or maybe they just had six kids.
Yeah.
It is, all right. We, I, I think we anguish over it every year, but in the big scheme of things, it's sort of, sort of like a rounding error, isn't it? I mean, uh, everything else. And we do get, and we get a fair amount of this back at some point later down the road.
Yes.
We do. Yeah, they get an income tax refund.
Of any kind?
We can, we can track it for six years, so.
Well, you think the percentage is? Is it half over time or is it twenty percent or what would you guess?
I don't know. But if they're getting refunds, we're, we're a good part of it.
Do you think we could look back on one from six years ago or when the, when the law was passed on one of those years?
Of course, that's long, I think, hasn't, it's been like four years.
Yeah, we, we, it's been a while.
Is there an easy report that could be run though that would say from twenty-twenty, it started out at fifteen thousand, but?
It's all, it's all manual.
One, it's.
It's.
It's a lot of figuring.
Yes.
It's a lot of labor.
Lot of labor for one, less than one percent, one to one percent.
Could we maybe go more.
I mean, I'm not sure that, what that information, other than being kind of curious information, is not going to help our situation.
Well, do we get a report from the Trex system?
Uh, we get, uh, reports, uh, we send out letters and we get, uh, on a weekly, weekly basis.
Yeah.
And, uh, we, we, they tell us who they sent letters to after we put it in a file and, and upload it to them. And, uh, you know, and then once we, once their, their time has passed, forty-five days, uh, then they send us, uh, some money. The, the Department of Revenue does, so.
So they get a letter saying that they're gonna, their refund will be less because of their utility bill that they?
And they have, they have a right to challenge that.
Yeah.
We, we haven't had many challengers.
So then at the end of the year, does the Trex give us like a report that says we, we paid you five thousand dollars?
I haven't seen an annual report.
Well, actually I got.
Or like a monthly one?
I think I got a ten ninety-nine for that.
Or did you?
From checks.
Because I mean, even if it's not year to year, if we just knew that since we started it, we could add up these past ones and say, well, we didn't know exactly who and who, but.
I think, I think you get that every, with every, so often. Uh, it's a total of Trex and then the years by.
Yeah, because that would maybe, like, not specifically who is who, but just of the overall percentages of.
No, that's, I, I think that's, I think I provide that to you.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know that it's been done this year because we just started the season. Uh, so we, it ends about, uh, the end of September, October, because all the refunds are, so I know all their taxes, usually it's done by then. Uh, so I, and that's, if you don't have it, I, I can get it for you as far as the, what, what the latest report was.
My only interest in knowing that is simply that we spend a lot of time talking about it every year. Maybe we don't need to. If this fifteen thousand, at the end of six years, it's going to be three thousand or five thousand, then because we've collected it over that six-year period, it's really kind of a non-event. So if we're not collecting the, you know, ten percent over time, then maybe we ought to try to find some ways to, to tweak the amount we either recover or keep the bills from getting so big by reevaluating our policies on it. Or, um, but anyway, again, it might be that it seriously is just not that much money right now. And by six years from now, it's going to be even less because we have been successful in collecting. But I guess we could look back and just see how much we've collected over the years that the total.
I'm thinking probably it was in October or something like that, maybe. But, but I can get, I can get it out again.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to spend too much time on it, but just a roundabout, if they gave you an annual statement, we could see what our totals were and just what the percentage of that.
They would give us that, but we also keep a, a running tab of what we get each, each hit is what we call.
I do, I do think people, I do think companies in the private sector would be perfectly okay with this percentage.
Yes, I guarantee it.
Yeah.
Most of these look like they're, there's only probably six or seven that are multiple months due.
Yeah, there's just a handful there.
We have a lot of them that are less than a hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, those are where the, the deposit was applied against their balance due. And so it's, it didn't cover it. Maybe it didn't, it was like, oh, twenty-four dollars or forty-two dollars or.
Yeah, that's, pretty, other than an automated system, it's pretty hard to chase somebody down for forty-two dollars.
Yes.
Is this report public anywhere?
No.
No? Okay.
What if it was?
Well.
I don't know.
Is that legal?
Might be all kind of problems.
I don't think we can, uh, publish, uh, uh, bad debt names like that, uh, privacy concerns. The names of these debtors.
Yeah, it's.
Well, does it hit like their credit score or anything? Are we helping other people for this not to happen to other people?
I, I don't know if you report to, you, you report to a credit group, credit reporting service. Um, but they do get reported to the Indiana Department of Revenue and, uh, their refunds get sequestered.
I will guarantee you, they probably don't have a very high credit score anyway.
Yeah.
That would be my guess.
That's true too, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it can't get any worse.
I lived in this world for a while, I can tell you. But, yeah. All right. Uh, we have any citizens items today? If we don't have any, especially there. We have some citizens here that have an opportunity to speak and will, that has your time. Then we'll have council items after that, so. Nothing?
Okay.
You do?
Of course.
She's not wasting her time like in a speech.
I came to the council meeting, the safety meeting. I have spoken in these meetings.
Worked on the courts and safety.
And shared with this. And I remember, I remember addressing vehicles on the street and why it couldn't be included in with this ordinance.
It is.
It is. So streets, so like law enforcement, what can they do?
Well, this ordinance is, this proposed ordinance is enforced by the code enforcement department. And if they see this and believe that that contributes to one of those hazards, which looks like it may, they could cite the owner of that vehicle. The problem is the police department is unable to give, they're unable to give ownership records by, by state law, they're unable to get ownership records to code enforcement department unless they are in fact enforcing a, a moving violation, uh, on a, on a public street.
So if you look at one side, you see one day, uh, where it was windy and things had blown off. And then you see, if you turn on the other side, so things were cleaned out. Three days later, you can see what it returned right back to. I know it's hard to see on the picture, but it was the same thing. So I guess that's my concern is where is it that whenever we take this up on the property to a vehicle, how can that be? Because when I was talking, and I'm not going to speak for our police, but the, one of the frustrations was that they can put a sticker on the vehicle, they can clean it up, but then it can also then be cleaned up. And then three days later, it can be the exact same thing. And then there's another sticker. And it's not a continuation, but it's the same problem. Does that make sense?
So they can fix the problem and start a new ten-day or thirty-day period?
One day.
And it happens, yeah, it happens over and over and over.
Right. And so it, to me, it makes the law enforcement look weak because they can't do anything. Their hands are tied. It gets very frustrating because the cost of the ticket to put on the vehicle, you know, is out of their budget. And then, you know, a day later, three days later, then they can't, it's another ticket and it's not. So, you know, are we just transferring from the property to a vehicle that's on public, public parking? And we're really not fixing what the problem really is? The vehicles then become.
Well, if we can identify the owner of the vehicle, the, the code enforcement officer can issue a citation, a notice of violation and then start, if it's not cleaned up within thirty days, start, uh, hundred dollars a day fines. And then finally a, if necessary, action for injunctive relief.
Okay. I, I knew we had talked about it before, but I couldn't remember what the answer was.
Well, you know, Phil and I have met. Phil and I have met on this, but, you know, one of my suggestions is, you know, if it's, it's something that's reoccurring, uh, you know, that we include maybe up those type of activities under a, a kind of a nuisance ordinance, uh, for those things to accumulate over time. Uh, so, you know, ten violations becomes a nuisance.
Okay, I see.
Uh, you know, those type of things, but it would be, we need an all-inclusive ordinance that covers everything else that's, we're dealing with. You know, if we tell somebody eight times a year to mow the grass, does that become a nuisance, or do we fight each time, you know? However legally that is, and then I, maybe speaking a little out of turn, because I'm not an attorney, and, and, and aware of state statutes, but, uh, if there's a way that we could have more teeth to be able to, to say that, you know, the second time may be a more severe nuisance than just one time would be enough.
It's, it goes really difficult to draft some ordinances on some of these offenses, because it's, it's impossible to anticipate every offensive thing that people come up with doing, you know?
Oh, yeah.
It's just amazing, and, and whoever thought you'd have to have an ordinance prohibit that type of conduct, but sometimes you do, and it's, it's really difficult to anticipate everything that can possibly be, be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have any other, uh, citizens or council items at this point?
Make most of the, wait, 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 you're too late. Uh, I want to pass these out, the VR, the, uh, twenty-twenty-four's, uh, all our funds, uh, the caches, balances, beginning and ending. The revenue and expense reports were, reported for each fund, and then the, the balance sheets for each fund. I mean, I'll give them to you when you leave, but I just wanted to.
Those are hot off the list.
I'll reflect it in the management center, I'll give them to you.
It's a lot of paper.
Well, yeah, it's got the name on them there, so, yeah.
Let's each one of us get one of these, right?
You get a whole, you, you get a whole packet of three.
Okay.
Steves.
I can't sleep, I guess.
Pams. Here's Jeff's. Glenn's.
There we go.
And I got Tim's, I'll put it in your box.
Stay, okay.
It's like the state of the city, or the state of the clerk treasures.
Well, it's.
Now we have this, we'll also be scheduling the state of the city addresses in March for that. It doesn't, it does have to occur annually on the, on the general, uh, financial condition of the city. Uh, we're putting together those reports now from each department too, on where it is, and, uh, really looking at it. We'll be doing that prior to one of the council meetings, probably the second one in March, right now, waiting really for Tom to bring the final, uh, numbers to us today. And I don't think that the eleventh or the twenty-fifth of, of this month, or the, excuse me, uh, the two meetings, uh, the twenty-fifth and the eleventh are going to be appropriate, because they're going to be long meetings, a lot of information, so really looking to March twenty-fifth for that report. And we'll do that, televise it prior to, uh, take about fifteen minutes, a little, scour that council, be about fifteen minutes or whatever, what to say to city addresses.
And I do want to say that those are, those don't include the utilities, because you should already have the utilities.
Okay.
They came at the end of the year.
So, we, we, tell me if you don't. We'll get the utilities.
I have to look.
We do.
Yeah, I've seen them on board back, yeah.
I think you're on the.
I didn't see the numbers on the board back, too.
I mean, it should be, it should have been, uh, but I'll see where they're at.
So we, we, we still do have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, do we have?
Second.
No, wait, I, uh, the mayor's youth council.
I finally stayed for a whole meeting this time.
How about it, Aleah?
Um, we're going to the state legislature, um, branch, right?
Yes, I don't know the date, that's about, yeah.
Uh, yeah, we haven't set the date yet, but that's where we're going to be heading. And then we do have a fundraiser going on right now for mayor's youth council t-shirts, so, um, if you want to order one of those.
I will email you the link if you're interested in getting the t-shirts of mayor's youth council off, send it out to all of you, uh, and everybody that's here, as well as, uh, anybody else, I think that may be interested within purchasing another fifteen dollars, uh, for the t-shirt, twenty-five dollars for a sweatshirt. Looked very nice, I ordered mine already this morning, uh, right away, so we'll send that out to you. Thank you for bringing that up, because I have it on my list to email tomorrow on that.
Send us the link.
Do you have a cause and a goal for the t-shirt fundraiser?
Right now, um, we're just trying to get more money for our, uh, personal, um, account. Uh, we do have money set aside and with you guys, but, uh, this is just for our school. Um, we're going to put it towards the community garden idea. Um, we're going to have the city pull out the bricks eventually, and then we're going to purchase, um, some already pre-made, uh, garden beds.
So they have some pre-made, as well as you have some people at school that are going to build some wooden ones too, as one of the other classes that participate in that. And we'll use our parks department to help install those and level them, and make them look good out there, so. They have eight hundred and sixty-four dollars in their account, and that's, people buy, what, three of those beds?
Hey, that's what I'm, how many are you trying to get to?
Um, I don't.
Depends on how many the other group can make, I guess, out of wood. And, um, you're having a big sale too, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what their per, per bed cost is?
Two, two-something, are they?
Um, we were looking at a couple different sites, so it's a different price, depending on where we go, so.
I think it's around two-thirty for the one you looked at, is that right?
Yeah.
That, that range.
Have you thought about maybe doing like, um, an adopt-a-bed or something, kind of like they do, like, if, like, if a, I could see like maybe some businesses adopting a bed, and then just giving the produce to the neighborhoods, or whatever, so.
That is something we talked about.
Yeah, we talked about giving people options and maybe painting something on those, decorating them with, you know, their, their own touch.
I also forgot, is there a water source there?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
How big of an issue would that be?
I think probably pretty big. I mean, I don't want to put a damper on it, but we did have a community garden in Indianapolis, and that was a big thing, like, during the drier months, to not have a water source. Um, we were able, well, I, I mean, I, what we did there, and I don't know if it's feasible here, was, um, once a week, we had a watering day, and we would get, um, a, a key from the fire department and use the hydrants to water, but.
Yeah, we do have the ability to do, we have actually a, uh, truck, uh, with a, um, tank, with, yeah, with a tank, with a full truck, that's what waters all the plants in Fourth Street. That's how they stay watered in Market Street Park. Uh, they have sprinklers, but Fourth Street doesn't, or the alleys, so we utilize that, we also use it to wash down the alleys and those type of things. So it comes to drought conditions, we're able, we would have the ability to run it and water those.
What kind of cost would there be to just put a water supply there?
I don't know, wow, it's probably, this would be that difficult, other than the cost of the water and, and who's going to be paying for the cost of the water, and, uh, would they be, they'd have to be exempt from sewer, I mean, from the wastewater.
She's got so much.
So, uh, we could send the bill, what's your address?
Well, but I mean, if, if, like, we're doing the tank system, that would also cost money, if it's.
They're watering, they're watering other places, Fourth Street and stuff, it's not that big of a deal.
That's true.
Yeah. Probably had to walk before we run on this.
We have the.
Well, I mean, some things like water is a pretty important.
It is, we do have the ability to, to, to pump water too, so it's not always, you know, if we have to pull it out of a lake or something, with, with the tank, because we don't need portable water, you know, with that, so.
Yeah, money would be better.
Yeah, well, yeah.
More nutrients.
Let more minnows in.
All right, so I'll make that motion again to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Call, go roll call.
Got to roll.
Fourth Street.
Oh, yeah.
Bounce.
Aye.
Bulte.
Aye.
Kissler.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
I guess.
We're, um, Smithsdale, I got six thirty-one. Thank you, guys.
No problem.